Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we can check the attendees and see if we need to elevate anyone.
Yes. Alex, I'll, I'll keep an eye on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me know when you're ready for roll call.
Will do. Welcome, everyone, to the Continuum of Care. This is a special meeting for the board. Is Jaja online yet?
No.
Okay. Jaja is also waiting to be let in. Okay.
Yep, I'm keeping my eye on the attendees list. I haven't yet seen other board members. I'm seeing Christina now. I'm promoting her. But I will keep my eye on the attendee list to ensure that all board members get promoted to panelists.
Okay, thank you. Today's date is December 15th, 2023. I would like to start, why don't we do roll call? Alex, that will give time for some to join.
Okay. Starting roll call now. Patricia Barnes-Sam. Tamara Baumann.
Here.
Kenyatta Carroll-Hillman.
Here.
Leece Castro. Jaja Floyd. Marvin Futrell.
Here.
Antoinette Lambert. She was here. Antoinette Lambert. Dorsal Plans.
Here.
Hey, dorsal. Ruby Romero.
Here.
Thank you. Martha Soss Rosi. Here. Christina Sawicki. Sherry Tillman. Galena White. Okay, we, with six members present, we do not have quorum.
Thank you. Like to start with the theory of change. If we create a homeless response system that centers on the voices of people who've lived experience of homelessness, then we're able to focus on responding to the needs and eliminating inequities in order to end homelessness. Context, the Seattle King County Continuum of Care Board referred to as the Advisory Committee and the Interlocal Agreement serves as our region's COC Board and carries out the mandatory functions required by HUD regulations. The COC Board plays an important role in ensuring King County receives federal funding. Under HUD regulations, the full COC membership has the authority over the continuum's work and the COC Board. Before we dig into today's agenda, I'd like to start with land acknowledgement. Is there a board member that will give us a land acknowledgement at this time?
Yeah, I'd like to recognize that we're on the unceded lands of the Duamish Tribe and other Coast Salish tribes that have been here stewarding the luscious land that we live on in the Northwest for many years to come. I also would like to say that land acknowledgements are not a new practice. They've been implemented for years with between tribes when traveling to different parts of the, the world. Thank you.
Thank you. For today's meeting, we, it was called to discuss topics to present to the governing committee. This will be our first. This will be our fourth, first meeting with the governing group as an advisory committee. And then we will move on to get a review of the point in time hub locations, how you can get involved with the pit. And then before we break today, we will do a announcement for our convening and hope the folks will join us. So up next is public comment. And for our board, public comment is open throughout the meeting. If you'd like to give public comment at this time, please raise your hand or let us know in chat. And if you would like to comment later in the meeting, please inform us and staff will let us know if that takes place. So if it's time, I'd like to open up public comment.
I'm watching attendees and currently I do not see any hands raised and there's nothing in the Q and A, but I will keep my eye on both of those.
Okay. I want to bring to note that our, my co-chair Jaja is still not able to enter the meeting. Alex.
As a point of order, just flagging, KCRHA has sent out links to the Zoom invite several times. Additionally, we have dropped the link to the Zoom invite in the other invite. So I'm not quite sure what technical issues that co-chair Floyd is.
I can send it again, but I've sent it now four times to people's KCRHA emails. So if she's not checking her KCRHA email, it will not be there. It will be in her KCRHA email, sorry.
There, there's a chance that it went into the other or folder. So I got this weird pop-up that said that Alex doesn't email you regularly, which is not accurate, but it moved it to a separate folder and that impeded some of the hyperlink functionality.
Thank you, dorsal. Are we tracking Christina? All righty. So if we can, do we have quorum?
You have 10 members present though. So yes, quorum is there.
All righty. Has everyone had a chance to review the meeting, the meeting minutes from 12 6, December 6th, our regular meeting? If so.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second, this is dorsal.
Thank you, dorsal. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed?
I will abstain. This is Christina. I have not seen them.
Okay. Um, I'm going to go through the names and
Yes.
Please tell me if you approve for, Patricia Sam. Patricia Sam, do you approve the motion or to approve the meeting minutes from December 6th? Tamara Baumann.
Approve.
Thanks. Kenyatta Carroll-Hillman. Leece Castro. Jaja Floyd. Marvin Futrell.
Yes.
Hello? Sorry, I think I must have paused there. Marvin, do you approve?
I do. Yes.
Antoinette Lambert.
Yes.
Dorsal Plans.
Yes.
Thank you. Ruby Romero.
Yes.
Martha Soss Rosi.
Yes.
Christina, you, so you abstain?
Yes, I abstain.
Okay, thank you. Sherry Tillman?
I approve.
Thank you. Galena White?
I don't know what we're bringing on, so abstain.
The motion is to approve the meeting minutes from the December 6th meeting.
Sure, approve.
With eight votes.
I didn't vote.
Okay, um, let's start from, uh, go ahead, Kenyatta. Do you approve?
Approve.
Thank you. Patricia Sam? Patricia Sam, do you approve? With nine votes, the motion is approved.
Thank you. Brittany, if we can change screens, up next is our COC, next steps for the governing committee. We could, if everyone can bring that up. The meeting is on December 21st. I believe 10 a.m. Austin, is that correct?
How's did you have the ability?
So just the meeting for the GC, I can, I can look up that date and a, Austin left the meeting because we did not have quorum. I would recommend focusing on whatever sort of feedback or discussion that you wanted to get from the special meeting that was requested by the COC Board Chairs last week.
Okay. And we will look forward to that information.
I I'm able to share the list of recommendations, so it's visible for everyone.
Thank you.
There you are.
So has everyone on, on the board had a chance to look at these?
Yes, and I can't tell you how excited I am that this is happening. Yeah, and especially seeing the, the top two. I mean, all of them are equally valid and important, but I'm so, so, so excited to be talking with our elected officials about the practice of criminalizing homelessness and why that's not in anybody's favor. So I really am so excited for this and thank you to the chairs for pushing for this. I appreciate that very, very much. One other thing that I might maybe tag on to the expanding services is to really emphasize the, the, the intersection between homelessness and behavioral health and why we need to be partnering and doing systems cross-training and, you know, just developing stronger partnerships, especially with the passage of the crisis care initiative. I, I, or the, whatever that passed in April. I think that could be a really great way to, to like bridge service gaps. If we can like tie our, our systems more closely together and weave them, you know, like network weaving, we'll be weaving these systems together to close those service gaps. Yeah, I, I could be like spouting off ideas all day, but yeah, I think that's really an important thing to amplify, but since it's, it's becoming like the norm to be talking about both issues at the same time.
All right.
I can't highlight that last statement enough. Thank you, Tamara, for bringing that up. It's very important that we be focusing not on just expanding services, but expanding how we reach services and what the services are talking to each other, like expansion of the ability to communicate to each other about, you know, this whole, because it's, it's, it's multi-dimensional, you know? So it's very important that we, we try to approach it that way.
Just want to flag that dorsal has his hand up.
Dorsal.
Um, yeah, um, so, um, I think this is a, an interesting list. There's a couple of thoughts that kind of jumped to my mind when I see it. If housing is the solution in the end homelessness, I'm kind of disappointed that we don't like call anything out in this about housing. I'm not saying that there isn't a need to expand services across the county, but I, I think there's an argument to be made that there's a limited amount of work a case manager can do and a county that is highly incredibly expensive to live in and does not have factually statistically enough housing for all of the residents that want to live here. And so I'm not saying to remove the expansion of service, but I'd also like to see something on here or something that, that continues to tie the solution of homelessness, the housing and the need for the governing committee to work in and around the region on increasing housing and supportive housing in particular. And then the other thing that I want to just potentially throw out there is I see that there is a, a call to increased services and this might be something that's built into the actual dialogue. Because I don't imagine you're just going to read these five bullet points and sit down. But I'd like to see something in here that specifically highlights and calls out a need for an increase in quality of services. And part of the reason why I mentioned that is, you know, some of the situations that we're seeing around, you know, sweeps and some of the narrative around sweeps is, you know, if it's shelter, you should just go inside. But I, I think it's important to note that if the services are not adequate to meet the need of the individual or the family, is that really, is it really expanding services or is it just an additional bed that we can put in HMISS that we have? Those are my two initial thought.
Thank you, dorsal. And for just context, expanding services across the county is having a service net that reaches all of King County, not just its urban or dense or urban centers, but the county as a whole. And I have noted down that part of the discussion should also be increased quality of the services that are presented. And I like the fact that, and I didn't notice it, but we should be tying, be able to recommend that we need more housing. And because right now, this is the, some of this is the stopgap. That's what services are, are doing until we can house everybody. So a good point. Others?
Yeah, this is Tamara again. I wanted to echo what dorsal said about like the, the housing piece. Since we're talking about like solutions to homelessness and the, 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 the tagline has been like housing solves homelessness. I, I think that is an excellent point to uplift and I think one other thing to tie to that is you line of those reports that came out from the state and from, uh, from the Washington Low Income Housing Alliance, the roadmap to housing justice and the pathway to housing security that was put on by Washington Commerce and the Action Fund. Those, those two reports have so many great things that I think we could use to educate not just the public, but our, our governing committee who, let's be real, isn't specifically focused on the ground level stuff that, that we do, since we're, a lot of us are frontline workers and a lot of us have lived experience of homelessness. I'm not sure where I was going with that. I lost my train of thought, but I really do think that we need to be amplifying rent stabilization and more equitable pathways to homeownership. And and then like really stabilizing the workforce. Because those, if you don't have a workforce to do the work, then you're left with a bunch of administrators who are like twiddling their thumbs, who don't know how to work with people. And so I, I, I think really like putting a, a large emphasis on, on, on that because as we've seen, like the, the turnover rate is ridiculous. I personally am feeling the pressure of, you know, trying to serve vulnerable people while maintaining like my sanity and dealing with all the other things in, in life. So I think those things are, would be things I would highly recommend elevating to the governing committee and also putting a plug for investing in capacity building and like a public education. And, and like having people go out into businesses, libraries, schools to talk about homelessness, to talk about, um, you know, what healthy relationships look like. Because there, as somebody who has experienced violence, I never got that education. So can we preemptively address these issues with a, with a vision of solving them in mind? We have to be like community-driven, solution-driven. And I'm sorry, I just kind of went off on a tangent, but those are the other thoughts I had.
Thank you.
Ruby, Ruby also has her hand up.
Ruby?
I, I would like to make some space if there is somebody else that would like to speak beforehand, though.
Okay.
I gave some space. So, uh, evictions are one of the number one leading causes of like going into unsheltered homelessness. Most people that get evicted go into homelessness or some type of homelessness. So we got to press on not just the stability portion, but in the rental assistance and eviction prevention point, because, you know, speaking of studies, there's the study from like 2017 that shows is like, I think it's called losing home, the human cost of eviction. And it shows that like out of 1,400 or so evictions that went through the courts, like 37.5 went into unsheltered homelessness. And then the other 50% like just went into like living doubled up or in shelters and only 12.5 were able to secure housing afterwards. I know that's partially one of the reasons I was homeless was because I had an eviction on my record. So there needs to be some sort of like addressing of that and, and maybe changing the language surrounding what prevents you from being able to lease or rent an apartment.
Right.
Then Patricia.
Thanks, Ruby. I saw that Leece put something in a chat and I wanted to give her an opportunity to bring it into the discussion.
Or remember. We've known each other for years and I know that I've introduced myself with pronouns consistently during the time that we've known each other. I use he, him, or they, them pronouns, not. Yeah, but I, I just mentioned that student loan debt is keeping a lot of people in poverty. I feel like it's big for itself. I know that a lot of us are encouraged to get an education, to get ourselves out of poverty, but sometimes it doesn't work for us. I know I went to Western Washington University and I know that I felt uniquely not respected or valued as a trans queer brown student there. So yeah, Bellingham was not the place for me and because of that, I have $11,000 of student loan debt that would have been canceled had the student debt cancellation gone through that we were all promised, that we signed up for. So yeah, that is something that I am still dealing with the hundreds of dollars in student loan payments each week. Sorry, each month.
Patricia, there's hands up, then Sherry and then myself.
Yep, I see Patricia, Sherry and Jaja.
Let's start in that order. Patricia?
Patricia, did you have something you wanted to say? Go ahead, Sherry.
Hi, everybody. Um, yeah, I agree with everybody's comment. I also feel like too as well, like, uh, with dealing with, uh, you know, families and single men and women that are homeless as well is the rent control. Because rent is, even though you could pay somebody's eviction off, but it's like the rent is really high, so it's not feasible for families to maintain stable housing with that. And yes, we have affordable housing and all that kind of stuff, but then there's barriers. If you, you know, make a certain amount, you don't qualify for that. So I think that there should be some type of change, even with affordable housing with, because people need to work. They want to make more money, you know, to be able to take care of their families. But sometimes there's that barrier that you got to make a certain amount and you're not able to afford. And then, you know, people want to be able to pay, you know, regular rent and maybe not going to affordable housing. But again, there's that rent control, that's still that barrier where they have to make, you know, three times the rent or the rent is just too high. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Jaja?
Yeah, I seen in the chat that Antoinette already dated where I was going to talk about, which was, uh, you know, the credit, you have to have a credit rating of 600, 650 or higher to get into housing. And that seems to be a barrier for people, just the credit rating. And I know that BIPOC people have a hard time. At least I did, getting my credit raised and then, you know, and then it, it, it plummeted, you know, for various reasons, but yeah. And it was no fault of my own. You know, I mean, it's a employment and the lack of money. So, and so therefore lack of money, lack of pay bills, that kind of thing. But that's a, a huge barrier for people. And I also wanted to touch on what Tamara was talking about with the homeless, not to, to educate people on homelessness so that they can see if us with lived experience, so they could see the face of homelessness. Everyone who is homeless is not this narrative that they point, paint of being, being mentally ill and unstable, all of them, or all addicts, you know, or criminals. Because you're going to find that in people who are housed also. And that's what I just wanted to touch on. I see Patricia is back.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, because I think I was off. I've been on, I just, something's going on with the audio. I just wanted to echo some of the things I am hearing as far as like the administration, Tamara, Ruby, Jaja and someone else spoke about the barriers and bureaucracy, me being a frontline case manager helping to get clients in services. I am, yeah, we need to address the tra, training, the front, the, like, the leasing offices staff. I just. The front, the, like, the leasing office's staff, I just. An example is I just. Supported a person to get into a apartment, a shed. And they took the deposit, they had them go, this is like an eighty-year-old gentleman. Back and forth with the paperwork, it wasn't clear communication, they filled out all the paperwork. And then to um, borrowed the money for, to put on, to hold one of the apartments. Units while things were getting approved, that was on a Friday, come Monday, he came back in because he was kind of frustrated. And they just kept his money. And they wanted to, um, they labeled him as being hostile. Because he. Is new to this system. And so we're just finding a lot of that, um, the people that are doing. So we're talking about then, another example is. The units are going up, they're going from shelter to housing. When they get the housing, they go through this long lengthy process of filling out all this paperwork. With the hopes of being approved and I've gotten a few. Callbacks that guess what, there was a loop in the system. This person there, um, it was coded or screened, the referral process was narrow. Just little hiccups that are on the system, those are some systemic. Challenges that we're facing out here in the community that need to be aware of, and it's not so much on the. Our clients and our population in the community. A lot of our people are doing what they need, they're providing the information, we're working with them to get the documentation. And they're doing that, and unless we're actually there to advocate, they're being stigmatized. And the biases come in on the other staff and it makes it challenging to do the work.
Thank you, Patricia. My question back is how would you like me to frame that when speaking to the governing board of elected officials? Uh, is that, would you like me to share the story? Or is there points that we need to uh, elevate for them that are in their sphere of changing?
Well, I'm looking at what we have here, I was kind of going off of Tamara and Ruby, the, the training piece. Um, how can we like? That's a good one, because the system, it's. How can we, um, maybe y'all can help me as far as like educating our. Like you, someone said, the administrative, you put people in and there. That are receiving our clients, but once our clients get to that point where they're doing the paperwork. There's a, a, a. Collaboration piece that's missing, how do we build that collaboration within our community? Statuants that we're working with, the partnership.
Okay, so um. Well, I, I want to repeat back, what I'm hearing is, is that we need our elected officials to reduce the bureaucracy. We need to challenge systemic barriers. And uh, increase education of our. Our system, our, our service system so that folks are more aware uh, and are not. Uh. People don't take confusion or frustration for anger or being a uh. Or being further victimized, so.
Yes, and, and yeah, and that's, you're getting on it, maybe some of our voices and sharing the stories. And I just want to bring this example up, I'm working with this gentleman, so they, um, we. I just talked with another, so I'mma just say, this is Shag, I'll just say that, I talked with another location. And they were able to look up, guess what they did, like you're saying eviction, they're almost like black walling. They flagged this person and said that they were hostile. And that they were aggressive, he has a hearing problem, he has a hearing aid in, his hearing aid, he has. Accommodation, this is helping him to communicate, so he also tr- it translates and he has a video, we have the video. And it's not showing, he just went in there nicely with his asking, may I have my money back? You're sending me through and they said, and if, and he, there, now they. Just kept his money and it was a Friday, so that very heartening, we reached out to this organization and they're telling us. They won't even reply back to us and it wasn't even forty-eight hours. It was a Friday that Monday, and, and so that's just heartbreaking. To see that I'm still working with the gentleman in the community, living in their car. And then I go to another, the similar agency where the barriers, this place has a lower barrier. So any, so what happened is they looked it up and I just got a report yesterday that said, oh, well. We were gonna schedule appointment, it looks like a good fit and they're telling me, oh, hold up, I'm gonna try to talk to regional. I'm glad I was able to advocate for this person, she said it sounds like it's more than that, I'm sorry this happened. But is he, their flag now? So that means that I don't want him coming in, filling out another um, application, putting um. Paying the fee and then charging again another three hundred and something dollars. Actually, they should honor and he should be able to further his process, move to another locate. And refund his money or use it for another unit, but they blackwalled him. And put that he's abusive, so soon as she put his name up, it flagged.
Yeah. Thank you, Patricia.
Thanks for that, yes. And we need our mayors and our representative leaders to know what we're dealing with and what our, our clients are facing out there. And do they have a voice?
Thank you.
And I, I agree, I said it was elder abuse, I brought that up, elder abuse.
I think you should absolutely reach out to um, somebody that can, like, I know, sorry, there's background noise, but. Um, I know somebody that could possibly, like, I'd like to get in touch with you guys so we can connect into like law services, because that is unacceptable. What they're doing is abusive. I have similar experiences, uh, when I was staying in motels. We would just get blacklisted out of nowhere after staying there for two weeks and being really nice, polite, cleaning up after ourselves. And everything, paying the rent on time, all that sort of stuff. But they would just, after two weeks, all of a sudden they kick you out, put you out on the side of the road with all of your stuff. And you can't go to any other of the specific chain, because they have you on like. A list, just like you're talking about, and, and, and I'm curious as to what they would say in our report, you know, like what they say about our client files. But we don't have access to that, about, you know, so it's. I, I can't believe that your, your, your friend is going through this, which is really sad, but I've heard so much harm in this community, as I'm seeing in the chat. A lot of us are lifting up the fact that this isn't the only time and this isn't the only way that we've heard about people being restricted. And that's, that's against the constitutional like civil rights app, you know, so. There's a lot of education to be done here and I'm, I'm happy to look into and make. Reports or anything, I love deep dives and I, I, I really believe wholeheartedly in everything that we're saying, if we can. Come together and make an advisory committee, I don't know, like an actual committee that just focuses on this toward. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I think um, that's, it, it, that's part of uh. Um, a little bit of just some thinking in the, the way that this is written. Um, because I think it's very important and I, I want to leave space because I, I think that the narrative, just like any media narrative, is complicated. But I think that's one of the challenges right now and the discussion around decriminalization. Is we have a group of elected officials who do have compassion, all humans have compassion unless there's something. Um, wrong, everyone has compassion. But they're, they're investing into systems and they are passing laws to be correcting things. And they're being told at their level that these things are corrected or that these services are available. And every time they're touring a facility, I know, I was guilty of this, I am guilty of this. When an elected official would tour one of my facilities, it was the best day at that facility. And so I think there's an element lost in translation and partly in our own fear of being honest. Of owning that part of the challenge right now and part of the reason why. We are seeing a presence on the street is that the service environment. Is not fully trained, is not fully staffed and is not meeting the quality that a human being. Should have access to, um, by right, um, and so I think. Part of the element here is kind of owning that piece and being very honest that. It's not just that we need an increase in services, it's that we need services that work, that are fully funded, that are actually trained. Um, you know, I'll, I'll say just in closing one last time, because I've said it several times here. Um, it is Washington state law that a, a DV advocate cannot work with a survivor of domestic violence without thirty hours of training. Fact, except for if that DV survivor is unable to get into DV shelter and has to access a homeless shelter. Then they are allowed to be worked with, with somebody with potentially no training on domestic violence. And then we wonder why we have families that are choosing to sleep in the car instead of accessing service. I'm not saying all services are bad, but we, we need to mention and own that. We, we, we have our part to fix in this.
And this is Christina, I've had my hand up, um, about, can you add to the expanding services across the county too? We need to engage with our state legislature. Because right now, um, Harborview Pro- the Harborview Vond, Harborview's not gonna be able to move on. Because they don't have enough because of building expenses, and so that's going to the state legislature. We just met, I was just at school and a bunch of MSW students were explaining to me how expensive it is. For them to pay for their internship. I don't have to pay for my internship, they have to pay for theirs at the MSW school. As well as student loans which have already been met, those are things we could work on, that need to be worked on at the state level. And we need to be giving a voice, an active voice, and COCs across the country do this. An active voice to the state legislature about what is needed. And I see that as the next step for the governing committee, is that we bring these things that are state-based. Working on student loan relief for our, for people that will go into services, that needs to come out of the state. Um, other things need to come out of the state, and so we need to work with our state legislature to that, and so we've got to. I want to see that added to our next steps for the governing committee.
I didn't know if you noticed Marvin, but Sherry Tillman had her hand up for a while.
Christina, I am just looking, um, I think I have something that. I want to write some, some of that down under. So, uh, oh, um. We want to ask, well, I think it is, uh, this, uh, the simple word, uh, way is to. Advocate on state level. Uh, actions, you know, uh, from us, we want to ask them to join in doing that. So, um. Yes. I've heard, and this is recorded, so I can go back, I do plan to go back and listen through to see. The intersection of several points so that we can add that to our next steps. Does anyone else have their hand up?
I don't see any hands up.
Uh, does anyone have any closing um, comments for us? Uh, I, it is my hope that in future uh, meetings, it will be. Both boards actually meeting, um, and just not an opportunity for the co-chairs to approach a board. But that is work in progress. Last, last call.
I just want, oh, sorry Christine.
I just want to say Marvin, can you include what is in the question and answer somehow, because that person eloquently said what I did?
Okay, yes.
And, and also I want to say thank you for giving us space to share out, this is helping. With to continue on the work, I know I feel a little frustrated, but it just feels good just to be able to voice some of this in this space, so I appreciate that. Mm-hmm, and also there is informa- good comments in the chat, so will you be taking that? Um, can you copy the comments in the chat and put them into our, like, the document, so.
Yes.
Steps, so that we can read them and have them?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and thanks everybody for your awesome work and the passion and bringing in the, um, it, just sharing out. We covered some good topics today.
Did we cover the budget?
Jaja, anything to add?
If we, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
No, I can hear you.
Oh, did we cover the budget?
At present, no one has spoken to it. Uh, our requests, oh, my simple ask is, is they uh. As the, was for the implementation board, as they are presented budgets that uh, we have an opportunity to advise on them. When possible, do you want, if there's something else we should say about budgets? Uh, more than happy to take notes and put it up there.
I know, I'm sorry. No, go ahead, Tamara, I, I was gonna say I have nothing.
Okay.
I was just gonna um, say, but maybe remind, gently remind that our budgets are a reflection of our values. They, uh, budgets are moral documents, and so where they invest their money and their, their. I guess their interests. Is a reflection of how they, they are leading or governing us, and so um. I, I, I hope that they take that to heart, a budget is a moral document. It is a reflection of our values as a community. So invest wisely and remember to invest in the people, not the systems. Because we need to change the systems.
Thank you, Tamara, I, I actually have that now. Jaja? Anything else to add?
No, that's good, except for that Ruby said we need to implement a homeless bill of rights. And I think that would be a great thing too, with, so the decriminalizing of homelessness would be addressed. You know, if they had a bill of rights, then we would see uh, decline probably in sweeps and other things that they do.
Quick, quickly.
Don't they already have a bill of rights though? I mean, aren't we, aren't, aren't homeless people Americans, you know? It seems, it seems redundant, but I know we have to do it. Because apparently, they don't respect us as people.
Well, maybe it'd be good just to remind them that we are Americans and we already have a bill of rights and that, that they should uh, look to those. You know, when addressing these situations and problems, or issues, I should say.
Patricia, yes, real quickly, I just, the last. Step says invitation. Governing um. Council to the convening, is that, uh, what, can you elaborate on that? Are you inviting them to the convening, will they be present, what is that, please?
Exactly, what it says. We're inviting them to the convening on Tuesday the nineteenth.
Have you heard back? Who will, will anybody be attending?
Don't know.
Okay.
We haven't sent that invite out, I was wait, if that, if folks don't have any objections, I would. Have, I, we will proceed forward.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Well, I want to thank everybody who spoke, this gets a lot easier when. We don't have. That we're not coming up with responses on the fly that we're elevating what our board as a whole wants to say. I think it's a part of the way the system operates that they try to. Channel information. Through certain access points and I really want to work at expanding that so that we are all thought that we're one board. Yeah, there's not, there's no difference between a board member and the chair other than hopefully the work that everyone does. All right, next, if there's anything else, can we move forward on the agenda? I can't see everybody, so.
There are no hands ready.
Thank you, okay. Up next is a review of the point time count hub locations. Do we have them? Did I miss an email that showed them?
Those documents were sent out to the board members and. Additionally, it does not appear that there's a member of the community impact team present. We strove to be very clear about. The possibility that we would not be able to have attendance due to the last minute nature of the special meeting request last week, so. Confirming that we do not have any members of our community impact team present. However, the board members did receive the slides with that information.
And when were the slides sent?
I reset them again this morning.
We sent them again this morning, okay.
They're in the meeting packets, I also can share my screen.
Yeah, Alex, I could just share to you that the documents were initially sent to everybody on Tuesday, December twelfth, twenty twenty-three at one thirty-six PM. From Alex Pifner of the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. These documents were again sent several additional times to answer your question, Coach or Futro.
Okay, thank you, Alex, can you pull them up?
Yeah, I have them right here too, I'm looking at them. They, Alex did send them out this morning, but I had them from when Alan said. I and I was in a meeting yesterday.
I can't hear you, Ja Ja, did you go on mute?
I'm sorry, Abby let me know that. We do not, like I thought there would be a hub in Kent, but that the only one that was solidified was South King County and. That would be in federal way, but not Kent, anyway, we had a chat about that.
As well as the service providers out of federal way thought it would be better to have it in Kent. Because in federal way, so many of the people are mobile and they thought it would be way too hard. To do it in federal way and there was at least what Ja Ja fifteen sixteen service providers that covers South King County. And so that made me concerned that we're going to have a hub in federal way and the service providers don't, not appreciate it, don't think it. It's has value because of the mobility of the homeless individuals there. And so we had discussed with the service provider yesterday that made a lot more sense, so. It raises concerns as to where to me as to where these hubs are going if the service providers think. Where they're at is just not really appropriate.
And actually, the service providers were talking about federal because they have. Not been able to go out there themselves because of the sweeps. They go out there and they start looking for people, then they do administering their services. That was that, anyway, that's all I wanted to say about that.
Can people see my screen?
Yes, Alex?
Yes.
And Owen did let me know that these, you know, they're subject to change as the date gets closer and logistics fluctuate, but. This is the list that we have so far. And the most updated one.
And another thing, this is Christina again, we don't have a Seattle Veterans Center, so that needs to be defined better, we have a, we have two vet centers, we have other stuff. But we do not have anything titled Seattle Veterans Center and I mentioned it to Owen already. And so there needs to be clarification of that.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I have my hand up. Sherry, are so are they still doing the sweep as well? Or just these hubs?
Sweep is totally separate, Sherry, the sweeps are have nothing to do with the PIT.
Okay, what I mean is that I know before they were going out and counting. Individuals, so are they still doing that or encouraging them to go to the hubs? Those that, you know, that are on the, you know, outside, are they gonna do that?
If not, the methodology on the hub, Sherry, is we did it last year, a couple of years ago. The thing is, you set up the hubs and you, there's like three brochures or flyers or whatever and they're giving out to. The people who show up at the hub, right, they get like three, three flyers and then the way it works is they take those. Those brochures or flyers, whatever you want to call them, and. Give it to someone else who is unhoused and then they show up at the hub and that and it show and what they're giving them is all the instructions. On how to get to the hub and how they'll be compensated.
Okay, yeah, I I mean, I know all that because I know we're doing it for families on the on the intake line, but. I was just wondering because. You know, just in case people don't get, you know, they don't reach people that are, you know. That are outside, if they can't get to them, like is somebody gonna pass these flyers out to them? But you're saying just the people that come to the hub, then they'll give the flyers to pass it out to other people.
Yeah, yeah, and that's how it works and that's just the methodology. So we're there, they have, they just changed it up. And and count people anymore, if they're using this methodology. And actually, it's supposed to be kind of like a domino effect, I give you three, you give them the three people, they give them the three people, you know what I'm saying? And that kind of thing.
There's also, I think, a formula to it with an extrapolation piece of supposed to be like. Showing how many are in like, there's supposed to be some sort of formula, I'm not a mathematician, but the. To extrapolate and like see how much the web is growing or something like that or like see what the web is like, I think.
Yeah, that's right, and and if you were in the board meeting when. Owen presented, he did give all that information about the methodology and the mathematics on it and how it works out. But I don't know if I answered your question, Sherry, I just know we're not going out and individually counting those that are missed.
Yeah, you, I mean, you did, I'd I'd already know how they're gonna do it because we have to do it ourselves, but. I just, that piece, I was just wondering, I know. There's still that was gonna be in there, but yeah, I got it.
Well, is there anything else on this? That folks want to ask?
If I could just underline to KCRHA staff that I really would like to see one of the hubs being in South Park, even if it's just for a few days. I really think the South King County, like South Seattle, King County needs to be focused on White Center is very close to South Park, it's also very close to the Myers Way. Green Belt and places, you know, it's close to Georgetown as well, it's it's. But it gets ignored a lot and I think South Park would be a really good hub location for at least a few days, thank you.
Okay.
And also I want to say that I noticed on the hubs in South King County, there was only two listed. And actually Abby counted about four or five of them yesterday when she was in the meeting that were solidified. He said those are the only ones that were. Those, the South King County has were the only ones that were. Agreed upon and that's exactly where they're gonna be, there were more than two and I only see two there.
This is the list that Owen shared was the most updated one that was in the last presentation that he did. I guess the slides that he sent after that were corrected. So I'm not, he did say they were pretty much subject to change, so maybe they were updated and.
Thanks, Alex.
Send that information.
Yeah, that's fine, I just wanted to let people to be aware that. The ones that were solidified for South King County was more than the two that you seen and which Abby shared, it seemed that. Addressing Ruby's quite comment that it would reach that area. So they'll be having one like that's. Amburian. That will reach White Center, Skyway. And Myers Way.
Thank you, Ja Ja, for that update, hopefully that's the case, thank you.
See Alan's hand?
I just wanted to offer some clarification and just. Responses to some of the discussion on this, even though King Community Impact Team is not here. If that would be helpful.
Please.
Just reflecting back that we are still waiting on a final answer on the Kirkland. And so a lot of, and I just a lot of the the questions and discussion that are being raised, I just want to confirm are being heard by by us. We also have several staff in the attendees in this meeting who are listening closely. And so I just want to assure everybody that the discussion is being heard and will be shared back with the Community Impact Team. Not making formal commitments to sort of address everything that is being discussed, but I'm expressing a commitment to ensure that the messaging and guidance. From the COC board members is being conveyed to the Community Impact Team and thank you all.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on the pit at this time? We'll look forward to a full update on in January's regular meeting. I'm gonna lean on staff again because I was unable. Do we know how folks can get involved with the pit? Community?
Again, unfortunately, we don't have members of the Community Impact Team present with us and so I would recommend bringing. Those questions to the January COC Board Meeting as you mentioned. And thank you so much.
And just to chime in. I did speak to Janelle, she said that there was a sign up sheet being created and so that she would send it to me, but I haven't. Received it from her yet, it looks like she's not available right now.
Okay.
Well, when we get it, we'll send it out via email and. And or talk about in the January meeting.
Hey, hey, Tamara? Tamara, on the System Performance Committee, we could probably figure out what at our co-chair planning meeting before we head to the COC Board Meeting in January. If there's any updates and we can bring those updates to the board.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Alright.
Sounds great, love it, alright. Well, the last piece of our agenda is. There's some folks in the room, we are having a convening. On the.
Yes. Um Mallory said something in question that like she said volunteer, volunteer recruitment will start very soon. They're getting trainings for volunteers scheduled hybrid across the county, three trainings will be held.
Thank you, Christina. Did everyone capture that hopefully and? What skin? At our regular meeting?
Yeah, and just flagging, I know Alex offered to send out that information with the additional update from our colleague Mallory. We will be sending that out, KCRHA will be sending that out through its regular channels, will ensure that that goes out to COC Board Members. But I I'm gonna take that off of Alex Pifner's to-do list. Because we want to make sure that there's cogent messaging going out just at one time, but we will assure that the COC Board Members do receive that communication.
And we'll expect that from Mallory?
It'll come from the Community Impact Team. Thank you so much.
Alrighty. I've jotted that down so I can backtrack that one when need, thank you. So the last thing on our agenda today is to announce our convening. And I'm gonna lean on Alan. Who is the gatherer of all good information on the convening, he's helped us so much in putting this together in a very short time.
But thank you so much, I thank you to those of you on the board who have been participants in helping to plan the convening. On Tuesday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, from ten AM to three PM, we will be virtual unfortunately. But we are very excited for our next convening to hopefully be in person. I just want to say that I think there's just a very exciting opportunity to. Align, refresh on COC Board Governance, there are some juicy trainings available for those of you who want to get into the weeds of. Learning more about the Continuum of Care Charter that really guides the work that the COC Board does. There is also going to be another training on decriminalization. Which has sort of come up earlier, really looking forward to that, we'll have time for questions and answers. We hope to get into some work planning to really help shape the work of this group going forward into twenty twenty-four. And then there's a member of the Youth Advisory Board who has in alignment with our Continuum of Care Charter and process. To appoint people to become members of the COC Board who has been put forth by the Youth Action Board. So very exciting way to end the convening with a new member on the board who's wonderful and been nominated by. Their fellow members of the Youth Action Board. I hope to see you all there and thank you again to everybody who has helped plan.
Two quick questions, there's an in-person option for the board members, correct? With that, while the meeting will be virtual, the board can gather, will gather.
Yes.
Do we have a location for that yet?
Four hundred Yessler Street on the sixth floor.
It's being held inside the.
Yessler Avenue, I believe it is actually not Yessler Street, sorry.
And I will send out an email. With directions and the address.
So the second question is, and I don't know if Austin never rejoined us, but sending invitations out to. Our implementation and governance boards. To attend, hopefully in the future, we might be able to do a convening where all three are represented and may present.
Thank you so much. If you, you you can definitely reach out to Austin, I unfortunately have a very cool date. If you, you, you can definitely reach out to Austin. I unfortunately have a very full day today and I can't commit to taking that on Marvin, so I'm gonna ask that. Thank you for making that request. And I do need your, your help to make, make sure that that gets done.
Alrighty. Thank you. Is there anything else for the good of the order?
Patricia has her hand up.
Thank you, Ja Ja. Patricia?
Just want to let you know that I will be attending in person the convening on the 19th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
I will be right there with you, Patricia.
Alright, is there anything else, folks? Anybody else?
Well, I do want to apologize to Alan for missing a couple of convening sessions while I have him on, right here in front of me. I am getting used to the Outlook calendar as opposed to my Google because I'm in different spaces with King County and my, my implementation board, my C O C stuff, I'm on the Google calendar. And so I, that's my go-to and I just forget, but I owe you a, a bit, a large gratitude. And a thank you for carrying the load, you know, because I did miss two meetings and here we are already at the convening. So I just wanted to apologize to you, sir, and, and let you know, I should say, Alan. Forgive me, I'm old and I revert back to the old things on your pronouns, but Alan, thank you so much for doing what you do. And I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you so much. And there, it, I so appreciate that co-chair Floyd. And I definitely would be remiss to not acknowledge that there have been many members of this group who have jumped into the mix. And so I, I, I want to thank every, every member of the C O C board here who has jumped into, to support. And I can't, I can't, I just want to share the appreciation and thanks to everybody who has supported and definitely understand Coach Floyd and thank you so much.
Great. Next steps for the group, our next regular meeting is Wednesday, January 3rd. I believe our only opportunity to have a C O C planning session with co-chair staff is Monday, this coming Monday, which I believe is the 18th. For Christmas is the following Monday and New Year's is the next Monday before. So I was, didn't, I didn't want to not ask staff that there was a way that we might work around the schedule for the agenda planning and setting base for the work. It's really hard during that time of year, but I think if we can squeeze in one other meeting, we can polish up an agenda, get it out with supportive materials and invites to the staff that are necessary so that they can present.
We can definitely send you some options that will work for us. To have that co-chair meeting, I think we could probably squeeze in maybe one 30-minute prep meeting to have a focused discussion on what will be on the agenda. But we'll definitely need to be really, really focused on that to make sure that we're ready to go for the next meeting. I unfortunately can't offer more than that because it did take a fair amount of sort of time and, and work for us to ensure that we were prepared to be here today. So we do have to balance and sort of boundary set around our capacity to deliver high-quality experience for our C O C board members. So thank you so much and we'll be in.
Be in touch. Alrighty. At this time, I will give five minutes back to everyone and call the meeting for today. We will speak to others.
Thank you, Marvin. And thank you, Steph. Kelsey, I just want to say to you though, in our last little meeting, it seemed that I, oh, did Kelsey leave? Kelsey had to go. Oh, no, she is. She's there. Oh, Kelsey, I just wanted to say in our last little meeting, I didn't mean to come off rude or harsh if I did, but I've been ruminating on that. And I just really felt like I needed to give you an apology. So I want to take that time to do this now. And you know which meeting we were in. And I just I want to say that to you because you're very important and you do the work and you've been there. So.
Nice.
I want to make sure you know that.
Much appreciated, Ja Ja.
Because when I'm out of pocket, I'm gonna let you know. I'm gonna go ahead and, and claim that. And you know what I'm saying? And thank you because we're all human and we make mistakes and we all, you know, we're all doing the best we can do. You know what I'm saying? And sometimes attention and, you know, anyway, you know, I'm sorry. I love you.
Appreciate that, Ja Ja. Before, before we close, ma-
You're on mute. You're on mute, Patricia.
Meet Monday at 12 o'clock for the planning and 3 o'clock this coming Monday, 18th. Do we have meeting?
We do have a meeting on the 18th. The o'clock meeting was, if that still works for everybody, we can keep it. If not, if we will do it at 3.
So I'm just trying to put it on my calendar now. I kind of got mixed up last week. I know we did a 12 o'clock and then I don't know if it was 3. I didn't attend the 3. So can you just confirm what time we meet Monday? So I have it on my calendar.
Yes, I'll work with Alex on getting that done. Thanks.
Okay, so you're clarifying that there, they will not be two meetings that day, just one, either the 12 to 12:30 or the 3.
Right.
Okay, got you. I appreciate y'all.
It's just the 3 if I'm.
Yeah.
It's just from 3 to 3:30 on Monday, the 18th.
Yeah, that was just a special one-time thing, Patricia, to move the calendars around. And you know what? And Alex, we want to let you know how much we love you because we know you do a lot of work. You know, you are our person, even though you're not in that job description. You're our person. And we wanted to let you know, we're sending you all the love, alright? And to the rest of the board, you know, we love you and thank you for taking time out of your day to be here with us. It's so important.
Have a blessed weekend. Be safe. Enjoy.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Hi, I have a lovely day.
Bye.
Like I said, have a happy holidays, everyone.
Yep, we'll see you on 18th.
Yeah.
Yes.